My close order, the Highland Park Board Education Hybrid Workshop Meeting. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and attend meetings for public bodies in which any business affecting or interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board Education has caused notice of this meeting setting forth on vague location to feasibility application at home news to give a star letter and posted on the board's website who is forty-eight hours ahead of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board returns in the evening. Okay, one call.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Chris C. Salban?
Here.
Mr. Fulman?
Here.
Ms. Galvin?
Here.
Ms. McFadden Unicola?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Bruce?
Here.
Mr. Rob Lemon?
Here.
Ms. Gardner?
Here.
Ms. Morgie?
Here.
Ms. Crosby?
Here.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Okay, I'll do this.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had two communications this month that we got reported. One was the issue of the crossing board, which thankfully did get resolved. And on September twentieth, we embarked out of our office in life. We tonight say workshop meetings, so we're not actually going to be voting. Just want to kind of go through all the topics. So we will be actually approving the hybrid regular public meeting of September eleven. We'll be improving our minutes. And we'll go right through the superintendent's reports. Oh, oh, I gotta start that off? Catch my surprise? Just a little bit, sorry. It was a little bit. Okay. So Irving kicked off their week of respect today with a concert in Mr. Ray. Students also went to a show last week from the Grand Palooza. They're talking about keeping the environment clean. By later, we will have their Walk the World School Day on Wednesday, October fourth. They'll be meeting in the old St. John's Chapel lot at seven fifty-five.
Bardo's practice school night is on September twenty-sixth. They will also participate in the Walk the World School Day on October fourth. They invite all students to walk their bike to school at seven twenty A.M. on board of their ten minute. Bardo started their week of respect today. They started with a Pacheco Day. And tomorrow will be their tie-up day. Finally, Bardo would like us to know that their not-so-scary Ludi Night will be held until Tuesday.
The middle schools' back-to-school night is held on September twenty-seven, and their first advisory meeting was held today. The classes met with their advisors for grade one school meetings. The middle schools' week of respect also began today, and they renewed safety special starting last week. They would like to welcome Mr. Ray.
The Highland Park High School's football team had a close game against the Dayton Bulldogs with a score of eighteen to twenty. Great job, Allos.
Yeah.
Another thing is Debra is hosting a carnival on October twentieth at the Highland Park Track by the Green Maybleish Foundation. They invite everyone to come and enjoy carnival games and food. The segment will be great for kids and supports group progress. SPE, which stands for Student Phase Enterprise Week starts today, which focuses on the promotion of the school faculty story. They also have their grand opening today, so snacks and drinks for students. Feel them through the day. Next, the guidance office will invite all juniors and seniors to the annual college fair colored wood bridge high school. This field trip will be held on October eighteenth. And if you're interested, then drop down to the guidance office to see if you can. Also, the guidance office will have their five hundred and eight running on October eleventh, from six to eight in the high school cafeteria. Additionally, there will be college visits this week in the guidance office. And encourage all juniors and seniors to sign up for the conference. Lastly, the National Office Society would like to invite students who like to help with schoolwork to the NHS two-day. Sessions will be held every other Wednesday in room one during period.
The HPEA is hosting a meet the candidates night on October eleventh at seven P.M. in the high school auditorium. They invite all to attend to meet potential board members. The high school will have their annual spirit meet from October ninth through October fourteenth and will hold their spirit hall decorating contest on October twelve. The theme of the contest is seasons, and the students are extremely excited to get started. We would love for the board members to come and walk through the halls on Friday, October thirteenth to see what students came up with. Also, our annual homecoming game will be held at seven P.M. on October thirteenth at the track and the field. The homecoming dance will be on Saturday, October fourteenth at seven P.M. in the high school cafeteria. Tickets can be purchased online, and the link will be shared for members to purchase soon. Students are excited to celebrate and enjoy the festivities. Finally, the high school section, our junior lines will have its first club meeting on fifth October during lunch period in Miss Crump's classroom. They invite anything all to attend. Thank you. About that, hold on. Any questions for our representatives?
Yeah, thank you so much. I have a quick question, Andrew. You may have said this, and I didn't hear it. But when is the time for the carnival? Did you state the time or?
Um, the carnival? So we have it set for like the last school period for the middle school and high school students. And then for the community, I believe it will start at three fifteen.
So right after, okay.
Yeah, but it will go until five. I'm just not sure about the start time.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions? Very much.
Well, really, it's anybody.
Lock it, lock it with our. Okay, we're going to move on to the superintendent's report, which is a follow-up to the feasibility study that we talked about last, last, last meeting. And also some additional information about spending facilities. So Dr. Comes in. And as she's setting up, the agenda says that we have public comment after the superintendent's report. Typically, it's after committee reports, but we'll do it as a spring. So there will be a public comment after the superintendent's report, and then another one as we'll just do the end of the day. Over five. Public comment there.
Okay, good evening, everyone. All right, I am pleased to share some updates. Last meeting, I shared the results of the feasibility study conducted by the Mar Architects. And there were a couple of questions. It's about standing items that need a follow-up. One of the things we also were left clear, we knew we were going to need was for the state of the facilities. The other things that we're considering, obviously, too, are the redevelopment in town, looking at our pro-ability.
I just thought that we'd like to look for her. I know there's been a lot of changes with the Red Bull Department in the last three years. So we're confident that we have the right.
Okay, there we go. All right. I'll leave you with all the comments. Sorry, everyone. You everybody. Upon a tree that might help us. Okay, try this again. Thank you. Okay, there we go. So we were looking at a number of different things in terms of follow-ups going on in the district. So I packed it all into the presentation tonight, so hopefully this should give the board and the community some more information as we plan for the future. So the purpose of the presentation is to follow up on the previous presentation from September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. You would refer to outstanding questions or concerns regarding the location of preschool expansion and potential referendum for facilities. One of the things that it's important to note that the architects' study results contain preliminary drawings of the spaces and can be adjusted as needed. I know last time we were fixated on number of classrooms in each building and where the play space was and all of that, including parking. Everything can be adjusted. Those are just preliminary findings. You know, the preliminary, preliminary drawings to show feasibility. Does, you know, where can we have space to build? From there, once we decide our space, then we get, that's a fun beginning because then we can actually work through what, you know, what we want the building to, to entail and contain besides the preschool classrooms. So just for reference, there were four potential locations. There was an addition, a location at Irving, a Bartle addition, the architects looked at a land on Woodbridge Avenue, right behind the, right by Irving, behind the first aid squad, and eleven oh two Rare Avenue in that land. The results of their study found two of the four were feasible options. They said that the Irving structure is really, really expensive and would require that the entire first floor of Irving be relocated during the duration of the construction. And it just was very, very complicated to, to construct it. You have to understand that our building core necessarily built for, for additions. So there's a lot of more engineering infrastructure that has to be done there. So, and the land at Woodbridge Avenue was more of a T shape and wouldn't be able to house a preschool building with the place space needed and parking. So that left us with two feasible options. There is an addition to Bartle, which would be on the fifth app side by the police station and by the municipality building, so the addition would be there. Or eleven oh two Rare Avenue, which is right now land that can be used for a building. What the board is, needs to do, hopefully by October sixteen, although if we don't have the, you know, all the necessary information to make a decision, we can push it off till November, but I would hope that we would do it sooner rather than later, just because then we can get the ball rolling on next step. Because whichever we decide, building is going to take some time. So we need to make sure we, we lock up all of our blue stats. So October sixteenth, I will vote on allocation for the building. So some of the information of, that was requested. So a question was brought up at the last board meeting that was posed about the number of SGI rooms and their capacity. SGI stands for small group instruction. So the New Jersey Department of Education has code as to the square footage for a small group instruction room. Those have to be four hundred square feet for all pre-K to twelve buildings, classrooms. So any building, it doesn't matter whether it's preschool or a high school, a small group instruction, square footage is four hundred. The DOE does not regulate the number of SGI rooms required for a building. So that's on the, the district. So we can determine that we want one, two, ten, fifty. It, it, you know, the number is up to, up to the district in terms of the number that we truly want. So I know the architects had a certain number of SGI rooms in the original plan. That was just they put, put that in accordingly. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's the number that we have to have. There was a question raised about retrofitting Irving to be a preschool building. So just for a reference, the, for those who don't know, the tower is over a hundred years old in twenty sixteen, marks its centennial. And the tower is a bit more complicated. So first and foremost, remember that preschool cannot be on the third floor of any building. So all preschool classrooms have to stay on either a first or second floor only. So that, so the third floor of the tower can't be used. And the basement doesn't have any full classrooms. If you've been in the basement at Irving, it has the art room, a music room, and some smaller construction rooms. And I'll get to the facility issues of the tower in a later my presentation. The rooms that are currently used for first grade and kindergarten would have to be expanded to meet the square footage to be bigger. Preschool requires a certain percentage of square footage of the actual size of the classroom plus storage. They're very specific for the amount of space that our preschool classroom can have. And our current first grade and kindergarten classes don't all meet that requirement. So they would have to be retrofitted and expanded to meet the square footage for both the storage and the space. In addition, our first grade classrooms would need to have bathrooms installed. So our kindergarten, kindergarten classrooms do have bathrooms, but the first grade classes don't. So they would have to be also then additionally be retrofitted to have bathrooms. So that would make it problematic. In addition, we would then not be able to accommodate grades K through five at Bartle. The Bartle addition would not be able to accommodate grades K through five. So if we were able to do all of those other things and make Irving an entirely preschool building, we have to then figure out where we can put K through five. The irony is if you wanted to move them to the land, the new land at eleven oh two Rare, I'm not sure if that would accommodate them. I could, you know, figure it out, but it would have a third story. So I guess maybe there might be a little bit more space to accommodate that. Some questions about the P three partnership. So eleven oh two Rare Nav is a property right now owned by a local, some, a local person in town and his partners. And what we found out is that we could potentially work with the borough or what they call a P three partnership. It's private-public partnership, and it would be under the redevelopment law. And it's really perfect timing since the borough has a whole redevelopment plan. I'm not going to get into that. I know a lot of interesting conversations about that happening in the community. But for our purpose, it can be part of the redevelopment plan. So part of their plan does contain that space down on, on Rare Nav and then by Irving. So we could potentially work with the borough under that redevelopment law. They are open and willing to work with us. What would happen is the district would sustain a cost of approximately one million dollars plus or minus, depending on the cost of the project, over thirty years. So there's the number fluctuating, and it would really depend on what we decide we wanted in the building, you know, and the, the sort of cost to build that. So, but, but engaging in the partnership with the redevelopment law actually makes a building a lot cheaper. And it has time certainty as well. So we would sustain the cost, basically lease it out for thirty years and pay it in the district operating budget over thirty years, or it could be less, twenty years, whatever it is. And at that point, we would then own the building and the land. So in, in the last presentation, if you're familiar, the district did own two other pieces of property in the past, two other schools, but sold them off many, many years ago. So unfortunately, we would, kind of puts, puts us in a little pickle now. Not that they, if they only had a crystal ball, maybe wouldn't, wouldn't be in this situation. But it is a really good opportunity to acquire more land, which we seek to really take it much of, especially in Highland Park and the building. The district can incur the cost of this project, so we reviewed the budget, and we plan to incur the cost of the, of the project in the operating budget, pay it off over thirty years. However, capital improvement projects to facilities would have to be on hold for a referendum. So we tried to do some larger scale every year, some larger scale facility projects in order to have the, engage in the partnership. We would probably have to put some of those larger scale projects on hold and need a referendum for that. So with that being said, what are the state of our facilities and what those future planning look like? So last, last week, we went through, we did walk routes. So myself, the business administrator, our director of facilities, our tech manager, the director of educational services, building administration according to each building, central office administration, and Marilyn, our board of vice president, attended our building walk routes, and we discussed the facility needs and areas for improvement and modernization. So first at the high school, I wasn't able to actually get the dates of how old these buildings are when I do know that the high school will be celebrating its centennial in twenty twenty-five, I believe. Yes, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five. So it is an older building. There's a lot of issues around the building, including plaster that needs to be repaired. So this is sort of big chunks of the plaster. That was the product that they used a hundred years ago to build the, to build the wall instead of, what do you call it? The voice of She-Rock, I think, She-Rock. So that would need to be repaired around the building, and it's, it's pretty costly. You need someone who's really good at, at that plaster. A lot of the hallways don't have good lighting and the stairwells, so we would like to add additional lighting in the hallways and the stairwells. There's a need for centralized plots. Apparently, in all the building, all the rooms, there are battery-operating plots. So, and we need to, yeah, the, the suits are shaking their heads. So to know what accurate time it is, the bell is really the target for that time, but a more centralized clock system. Right now, the only building in the school that has a generator is the high school, and it does not really equip us with any safety ability. It really can do very minimal for backup electricity and any kind of emergency requirements, it does not sustain. So we asked a lot of questions with our generator. So we'd like to upgrade the backup generator and probably move it to a location that could better service both middle school and the high school, because the middle school does not have one at all. We also found a need for ADA compliance in the high school for easier building access. If you've been in the high school and you would like to go to the media center as a high school student or a staff member, and you have a, a mobility issue, you have to go down the one elevator on the science wing side to the bottom, then take the ramp around by the cafeteria and up through the addition to the middle school, and then to the middle school elevator, and then up to the media center, and then belt race, and then you've got to go back down, around, and back up high school. So there's, there's a lot of things I think just because they, you know, that was a hundred year old building, they, they probably weren't thinking that, that far in the future with it. So there has been a real big need to upgrade the high school for ADA compliance. What that looks like, I don't know. That would be for the architects to determine, but that is something that we established a big, big issue in that building. Our locker rooms are in great need of repair and updates. In addition, there's some plumbing needs that may happen in the science projects and those science lab areas. There's a need for more office spaces for child studies, even other related services, and this is due to increase in special education programming. So we have a lot of shared spaces with our related services, occupational therapy, speech therapy, and things like that. So a lot of related services. And even our child studies, being our school psychologists, social workers, that are sharing offices or sort of renting space. And it's very hard, especially when our meetings are confidential about special education students. And we're just busting at the seams at the high school for the space. For those who don't know, our special ed office at the high school services both the high school and the middle school. So that small little office sort of is full. Okay, well, it's, it's sort of the whole district, but here, but Bardo has offices for CSD and Irving has offices for CSD. The restrooms need some repairs and upgrades. We'd like to remove the carpet and replace it with new flooring. Not sure whose decision it was to put carpet in a cafeteria at the high school, but it is not, not good. So we'd like to replace any areas where we have some carpeting with some newer flooring. We definitely have some roof. I know we're doing some roof repairs now with some of the Esser puns, but there's still many areas in need of some roof repair at the high school. In the main office, the main lobby area, coming dab room, like we walk up those stairs, there's a huge leak up there, and that's a relatively new leak that we didn't plan for. So, you know, it just, we really need some new roofing, some new roofs across pretty much all the schools, but definitely the high school. We'd like to upgrade the security at the main entrance. There's a need for music rooms at both the middle school and the high school. So if I am an orchestra student at the high school, I have to go through from the high school to the middle school, all the way to the third floor, take my orchestra class, then go back down three flights of stairs, walk over to the high school, and then back to class. So, I mean, it's not that it's a pain. I know the suits have been doing it for years, but we have seen that it is a little problematic for, for the suit. So, you know, some, I know we value the arts, and it would be nice to have the middle school have their own spaces for, for the programs, and then the high school have their own spaces. Another thing we have talked about was possibly air conditioning in some gymnasiums, maybe completely at the high school, if that is a, an emergency evacuation location for the community. For the middle schools, the middle schools are newest buildings, so they're only a couple. So the middle school is in really, really good shape, but there is a need for either two more classrooms or one classroom and one conference room. So the middle school, also because of the specialized programming, this is the first year we have brought our autism program up to the middle school. So our, our program now is expanding, which is, it's amazing. It's really robust, separate from keeping students in district, but that requires its own classroom space. So our specialized programming does, now that we're going to the middle school, so we do need to move more space with that. The bathrooms need to be updated with some repairs. There is a request possibly to make a more modernized neighbor space classroom. And again, the need for specific music rooms. At Bartle, Bartle has a bunch of needs as well from the facilities. First and foremost, our courtyard, the courtyard there is very difficult for facilities to maintain. It's very shady, not much sun gets there, so it's, the sun, because there's trees in there as well, is shitty and very overgrown. And in order to get, in order to clean it up, you have to go through the building to get into the courtyard to clean it up, and then bring all that brush, brush out. So it's just really not super convenient. So, you know, we're looking at maybe ways that we could modernize that courtyard area and look to making it, the students love to use the space, but maybe upgrading it a little bit to make it a little easier, a little bit like building maintenance, so it doesn't get so overgrown. The lighting, especially on the second floor or the main floor, needs to be upgraded. It's very, very dark, and we need to modernize the lighting there. That building needs a full electrical up, up, update. The electric is very heated. The circuits get tripped all the time. We had to install some new out, you know, new parts in the panel, whatever you call it, to stop tripping the internet there, because that, everything was just sort of running on the same circuit. So there is definitely a need for electrical upgrades throughout that whole building. We particularly interested maybe in purchasing a backup generator. Doesn't have to be a large-scale one, but something for emergency lighting and emergency fire alarm and things like that. That's what we're talking about. If, if power goes out and there's an emergency, there's no way to sound people in the building that there's an emergency. Possibly a centralized HVAC system. So it's been great that we've been able to get those ductless mini splits in each of the rooms, especially during COVID and over the years. However, now that each, each classroom has ductless mini splits or a window unit, we, we just don't have the staff to maintain changing act filters and, you know, and keeping those running efficiently. So it becomes problematic. So, you know, and also with the, they're sort of like globally adjusted. So teachers and our, and staff, we kind of adjust them, and it kind of spews our electric bill and, and things like that. So maybe more of a centralized HVAC system would help, you know, sort of maintain the temperature in the building a little bit better. Our bathrooms at the Bartle are the worst of the district. They are in really, really poor condition, so we'd like to upgrade and update those. The gymnasium in the, at Bartle also needs to be redone. There's been a lot of water damage in there, and it's bone, the wooden floor. Possibly modernize, modernize the media center. In particular, more than anything else, is the need for the tech equipment to be secure. So when you walk in the media center at Bartle, there is like a little office with two doors, but the tech equipment, the racks, which is like the brains of the tech at Bartle, that has all the switches and, and everything like that, is just exposed. So anybody can go up there and, don't do it, please don't do it. But anybody theoretically could go up there and, and fiddle around and do stuff, and it's just not in a secure and locked location. So maybe sort of build that out to make that way more secure would be, would be great. The auditorium seats at Bartle are not accessible to all body types and need to be replaced. So we've had some issues with some students not being able to sit comfortably or at all in some of the auditorium seats at Bartle. So making that a little bit more compliant to all body types would be great. And the vents need to be replaced as well. Irving has some needs as well, roof repairs. We have a bunch of needs at, at Irving. The bathrooms need to be updated. We'd like to request possibly cafeteria windows, they need to be more secure for standing purposes. So, you know, not that this would be ever furthered by enough, but a potential upgrade would be in this film where you can sunlight come in. We can see out, but people can't see in. So some possible safety features for those windows at Irving. At Irving, removing and redecorating the classrooms and replacing the non-market substance. There's a lot of issues with, with storage at Irving. If you walk around the lake, you see stuff sort of piled, piled everywhere now. Some of it is for, you know, moving things into the outdoor classroom, but there is a, you know, early childhood educators have a lot of stuff. They come with a lot of stuff, which is all great, but, you know, sometimes we just need storage for some of that stuff. The art room is, and the tower is the heaviest hitter with our roof issues. For example, the art room, the miller needs to be completely replaced. That's like all the cabinets by the sinks where the kids wash their hands, store their materials. You can't even open the cabinets, because the water damage has caused all of that to sort of warp and close, so you can't open any of the cabinets. And they've actually separated. So the cabinets now are, you know, where they normally attach, they're now separated. You know, and there's many leaks in the art room. If you go down there, it smells musty and gross, which is not conducive for, for learning. So we'd like to look to see to get some upgrades there. There are some rooms that don't have windows, don't have screens for their windows, so we'd like to consider getting some screens. Like I said, the basement is relatively musty, so hopefully some roof repairs can fix this issue, but maybe more research needs to be done. I don't actually know what is causing the musty smell. I'm just reporting that it's musty and that it does have a lot of, a lot of leaks and a lot of issues. I'm just reporting that it's musty and that it does have a lot of, a lot of leaks and a lot of issues. Same thing at Irving, a centralized HVAC system, because we piecemealed HVAC there as well over the years, and some security upgrades. So why are we sort of packaging all this together, this idea of planning for the future? So considerations really need to be made for, for a bunch of things. One is obviously the redevelopment of the town and in town, which could potentially increase our enrollment. We don't know if that's going to happen or not. Right now, we're working on looking at the other areas the town has been redeveloped and looking at the impact that's had on our enrollment, which has increased our numbers. But we're just not sure yet. But I, I think it's important that we make decisions with that as a consideration. So we don't know what the redevelopment is going to bring us. Unfortunately, until we find out, you know, maybe we don't really know, but we do have to make a plan for preschool. There is a need for expansion of classroom space to accommodate preschool for all three and four year olds within the next four years. And considerations need to be made for facility upgrades, as some areas in the buildings have not been well maintained over the years. So a lot of it is just sort of a little bit of, you know, the letdown of some of our facilities over the years. And so that's kind of led to some issues that will happen now. So, you know, I think what we need to do is sort of consider all of that together. One of the things as a next step that we are doing, we're having DMR as our architect come back in, show the walk-throughs of the buildings as well, to look at each of the buildings for efficiency for those facility projects. So one of the reports that we got from the New York Department of Education says, based on our current enrollments, our schools can accommodate our current student population. But their number is coming from the general education perspective. So our buildings can handle our students in terms of the general education numbers. What they're not giving us is a report to say your buildings cannot hold specialty, you know, enough with the specialized programming and that kind of thing. So that's important to, to note. So what we want in DMR to come through is saying, we think our buildings can accommodate all this, but maybe we're not using our spaces efficiently. So are there areas in which we could do some smaller projects that don't require us to build, you know, an admission onto the high school to accommodate the high school seats, right? I think there's some areas that, you know, we could kind of look at inside of our different buildings to accommodate both sort of a growing potential population, but then also specialized and/or specialized programming. And then they're going to look through for our facility projects as well. So we made the list, we'll give it to them, we'll do the walkers with them and say, hey, here's some of the facility projects we want to do. What do you think? How could this work? How could we use this space more efficiently? So really, there's, my recommendation is that there's two considerations. So one consideration is a referendum for the following. If Bardell is the location, a referendum would have to include approximately $20 to $22 billion in debt service. So we go to the state, say we like a loan. So after our current debt service falls off, we're going back to, to do that again. We're going to get that money to build the addition to Bardell. We'd have to probably include some additional parking. Again, you don't have to use all of that space behind Bardell for parking, but I would probably strongly recommend that some additional parking spaces be considered behind Bardell if that were the case. And then and/or some facility projects in the building with whatever money was left in the debt service aid. So whatever money was left, in our capacity of what we can borrow from, maybe we could do some of these facility projects as well. That's what I would, and or it would, you know, I guess depend on if we wanted to do some of these upgrades and sort of get the, you know, done sooner rather than later. Another consideration is the P3 redevelopment. So this then would be the lease purchase of land in the new building, which gives us time and financial certainty with no risk to the district, because the borough would be doing the agreement under the redevelopment law. So essentially, we work in partnership with, with the borough and the redevelopers to put a preschool building on there with parking and a, and a place structure, a natural place structure. And then at the completion of the project, the borough hands us over the, the agreement for the, the possible land in the building, and we put that in our operating budget. And we could still do a referendum for all of our facility projects, and we wouldn't need as much of the debt service aid. We really wouldn't need $30 million to do all of those projects. So we could get all of our facility projects done. Again, the better utilization of the current buildings for expansion of enrollment due to topic development and/or our specialized programs. So that is the end of my presentation. I go for a lot. I will open it up for the, whatever questions or comments.
I have, I have a question. So when we were looking, last, last time we met, when we were looking at the possibility of a referendum, it was stated that because of the way our current debt servicing is structured, that if we were to do a referendum, it would not have any impact on our tax base, is that correct?
Correct.
So.
So both of the options would give zero, would keep it level, wasn't it? But the, but the, if you wanted to do, let's say, first off, where you have the building at Bardell and all the whole facility projects, I'm not sure how much that would cost. So one of the options you could put on a ballot is to say, you know, to keep it level, zero tax implication, you're voting on these items. If you would like tax implication and how much your taxes would increase with these other additional things, you could vote here for that. What the state says though, just FYI. If you go out for referendum and the referendum does not pass, you cannot do your projects. So just keep that in mind as well. So that is, I, I know, I'm, I'm not, I was not here when the previous referendum was passed, how difficult that was, I, I don't know. But so just, you know, for, for reference, that, that is something to consider.
But either of these proposals would require a referendum?
Yes.
So you can't do your project, meaning that?
Anything that would be under a referendum. So if you say you wanted to do the preschool, the preschool building, and it doesn't pass, you can't build a preschool class?
Couldn't that go to the other?
No. Well, I mean, it maybe could, but at this point, like, that's now, because it takes time to do a referendum also. So we have to file all the paperwork, and then you can step on the boat, you know, and all of that. So it would be next year that we would even be doing a referendum. It felt like I'm flipping a switch tomorrow, and we're going to vote in November. It has to be like a year out at this point. So it would be this time next year where we would be looking to get a vote to pass a referendum. And then if it doesn't pass. So then I don't, I mean, at this point, I can't guarantee that that land is going to even be available in a year from now, or even for this consideration.
But if we take that advice, it's a really bad project.
You have, you have to, well, I think you have to put out, when you go for a referendum, you have to be really specific. So if we're saying, we're going to take the media center, I build, if you remember in the high school media center, there's a cloud of, of these spaces there, the suits is a lot of it, but there's a very large circulation desk, there's a bathroom that has DVD tapes, you know? I mean, I'm just impressed they're not wrong, I'm not, I'm not wrong. So but, but maybe that, some of that space could be a potential for another classroom or small construction, if we use the CSD spaces or something like that. So we have to be specific to say, this is what we're going to use the space for. And if it doesn't pass, then we, then we have to figure out the offer, if that's what we want. Then we can't use the debt service aid for that. I hope it can try and solve it. Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah.
So Christina, if we do, if we go with the program, it's seven, it probably allows you to have classroom spaces. There really isn't room for other classrooms.
Yeah, I guess it would probably depend on if we did, depending on the small group construction spaces, if we wanted to maybe decrease that. Or maybe there's a better, a different configuration of that. That was just one configuration. So I'm not sure how they could reconfigure it, but.
It's pretty hard to reconfigure spaces if they're not available. So, right, if you consider A, it's.
For parking or?
Parking.
Well, again, to, no number, there'll be some of staff working.
What's your favorite?
Yeah, I know, no, I know, I mean, I know.
I'm just trying to, so, and I think before, if I'm remembering correctly, we were talking about creating 14, 15 classrooms.
I agree.
A whole day. So, so that offered the, you know, building dead, that referendum has like some, some, like, additions. Parking or classrooms, like, all that stuff.
But one of the things we could do is we could, if the architect tried to reconfigure it, see if there's other better efficiencies of the space to create, maybe there's just a different design of that structure to create more spaces. Again, that was just one design that they came up with. But I'm confident that we can probably, you know, look at that space and maybe it's just a different design. Maybe it's not a rectangle. If it's just a different design, that would get us more, more spaces for the property.
I mean, I think some, but I think some of the running here is just a little bit scarce, right? Because the third floor, there's people, you have students there, just like your mentioned.
You can't do classrooms, so you could do.
I can put classrooms there. It still has the same with the students.
Right, right.
And in that way, it's only, it's up there.
Right.
Actually, a classroom, so.
Right.
But I mean, it's awkward to me to think about Bardell being a preschool slash a five classroom. And then, you know, it's going to take one, but in some way, it actually passes. It feels like we've been thinking about.
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm trying to, I, maybe I shouldn't have showed the picture in, in the first place, but it, part of it is, we have to, yes, those were one example, but we, we don't have to be married to that book. We can tell, you know, once we're done, that's the space we want. We want a building, a lot, and how can we get 14 classrooms in there? Or how can we, and then try to figure out the worst.
Not just the picture, right, but the square footage, right? So you only have, you have two floors and most square footage of this space, so. You might as well squeeze in one, maybe two more, but then you're going to start using the parking spots and maybe go to the movement by playgrounds and stuff, you know? But, so, I just think, you know, there's trade-offs involved.
Right.
But it seems like we're worried about more students. It's how I'm a little bit disadvantaged talking about, you know, staff, parking.
I mean, I can definitely reach out and ask them if there's, you know, if they didn't provide some confirmation or some ideas on how to increase, you know? Again, we're, we're not voting against the night, so if that, if it started, I could definitely reach out and ask it out.
We have some important information there.
Or, but.
It's also because our high end is.
Well, it's not like we want to give away the long, long group construction rooms either, right?
No, no, we can, yeah.
But I just think, I, yeah, thinking about configuration of a new class space, that's, that's really would be helpful. I, I know, I have questions, we need someone to be in that question about, you know, Irving, is there a way to represent it?
Yeah, that would, yeah.
Which is unfortunate, but so I think we already have other two options, and it says about.
So I can definitely try, I'll reach out to the architects and ask them to, like, what the, sorry, even with the reconfiguration, how we can get, you know, what the matching options that we can get there and what happens.
Sure.
Christina, if you could also, you know, we, we saw in the potential plans of courtyard, another courtyard at Bardo, and maybe report the courtyard that we currently have, it's not really provided either. So perhaps we could figure out a way, maybe we don't, the courtyard is more effectively used.
Well, they said that you, you could, well, they said that you could, one of the things I think we could do is like have it open to the outsides, like, so that you don't have to go into the building to go into the courtyard. But they did say you can't not have the courtyard because of the easement from the current building. So they, you can't have it like butt up against the building. There has to be some sort of space in between it. And then your, then your playground can be on the other side against the road there. So that, that is an option, like if you wanted to do that. Again, a, a, anything is possible, you just have to tell them what you want in the end, and then we can work on the design afterwards. So they, you know, you can, we can definitely move the building closer, the addition closer to the other building, and then have the space, but there'll still be something there.
Just a matter of like whether or not students would be able to use it.
Right.
Productively.
Right, right.
Or it's just, you know.
I mean, I will say the new swishing surface that we have for the Bardell playground is awesome. If you have a guy playing on the new playground, probably swishing, that's really cool. So maybe something like that in the courtyard. Oh, all right, well, definitely go with that, it's fun. But, you know, maybe something like that instead of, you know, right now, I think it's, it's a little weeds and mulch and papers and stuff like that. I don't know, just your thoughts. Yeah.
Could, could you maybe leave, I mean, this might be a question of ours, if you leave one of those, and it's a little bit of a part of the ages. Like, so if you actually have a hallway and you have two doors that like exit each way, so you can exit the building and re-enter the other one, then that would be that courtyard open. Any area aside from closing off.
Oh, I'm not sure the security personnel are going to pass on that. Yeah. All right, I need, so any of those, those ideas are possible. We just have to figure what those, what if, you know, after you decide a location that's going to be best, then it's getting to the minigrade of trying to figure out what the, you know, what will really work best.
Do we know what the architects are going to come to their next meeting? Because I'll be very honest, I would want them to be present and be able to discuss some of these issues before making a decision.
We can apply the all day in the back.
Now, I do have another question about the idea of building a barn in that the modular classrooms at Irving really have to be an apartment space for the kids. If we were to build an additional Bardo, is that going to then decrease play space for the kids who are currently there?
Well, it's in areas that are currently made in use. So we probably, I, I probably recommend a little bit of the play space in the back part of Bardell where your two through five students will play, to have some additional parking. I wouldn't take it all, but I think a couple of additional parking spots would be helpful to, you know, for the staff at Bardell. So we still have a good chunk of that play space still.
Which has grass. With grass.
It's a state of grass, we're very excited. But some of it I would recommend that we use for, for additional parking.
If we lost the side guard, which is going to be a part of, part of our block.
Yeah, that would all sense to me, yes, yes. Right, that's the whole thing, that we can't get, like, land is, is really the one thing that we can't get a lot more of. So you're right, so if we take that space around, then we can do the part of the block or, you know, and they go out there and do a lot of, they have to go, they have to go all the way off in the back. So, oh, sorry.
Thank you for the thorough presentation, so much information. I think for me, of this discussion, I feel like I definitely need to have some of these design options presented before I can be comfortable, I believe. I think, yeah, some of this can be determined after, but there's too many questions here that I think should be answered in terms of design options before we are able to move on these options. So I appreciate looking to that. And I also think it's unfortunate that we don't have specifics around special education spaces, you know, really getting a firm, not from the architect, but who has no idea about special education services.
No, but, I mean, we have from Pete. So she, Pete did, the director of services did walk around all the buildings with us and didn't point out areas that we need for, for our special education programming.
Okay, so in that sense now, and that brings us to my, until a question about specifics, which I know may not really be a priority right now, but related services and shared spaces. The shared spaces now refer both office and delivery services, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're really looking at the service and the rate issue.
Correct.
Okay, for OT, PT, C.
Yeah.
And then specific ADA compliance needs. Just to be clear, we're only talking about the high school based on your presentation, right?
Yes.
And one issue that you mentioned is people needing lines issue at the high school.
Well, I think that was one example. There are other issues at the high school, that was one example.
Okay, so I'm just curious.
It's the main one, because, you know, the, yeah, but, you know, there was.
Yeah, no, it was, it was, I, it was something I would need to make, I think that was important, but it was like a short five steps, and then we could actually return them to the school. So, yeah. Right, the other ones, right? So if you're thinking of somebody who's in a wheelchair or someone who's, you know, whatever, with special students or not, and it comes to several kinds of issues around here. So it's definitely very challenging to get them to place. Certainly, everybody thinks what we need to, I guess, but when you look at it with a set of eyes, you know, it's, you know.
Yeah, no, that's why my mind, I just would like to actually know specifically what are all the ADA lines issues that we have very specifically. I need something with that, and I absolutely should prioritize.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, going off of that, the one thing that stuck out to me was the security upgrade for the front gate, for the entrance. I know they deal a lot on that, so I guess my question would be curious to know what's still weak, do you need to use on that?
Yes, I think, I think, were they able to get the camera in there so that Ms. Gina could look at the IDs and.
Yeah, so I know they, I know they, they require a particular team now, but other than that, I was just curious. Yeah, so I know they, I know they, they require additional warranty now, but other than that, I was just curious to know what was still.
Yeah, I think, I think it could potentially be more, um, pictures of the cameras and door locks.
Okay.
Um, as well.
Thank you.
I know we have the big pictures coming in, but probably, again, looking at the background, I'm pretty, it's like that one, so you can.
Thank you. Yeah, that's one of my questions. So, so I'm glad you asked that. I was curious too. I knew we made some upgrades, so I, I can't. I just would like to know specifically what those security, uh, features. And then, okay, so this, this basement's now, and what are the classes that are taken? Just the art classes or?
It's art, music, speech is down there, um, maybe with PT, there's related services down there, um. Yeah, yes. Really, or we got, the hardest.
If you, I know you want to make a recommendation for some additional parking Voral that was supposed to be gone. Do you have any idea what number you're going to move out, just based on the property, the, you know, design, feedback you receive?
I don't know if you could give me the feedback or anything like that, but we can certainly look at the plans and come with, uh, a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, then, your question, some pepper and cover the whole thing, or is it hands boring to get, right? They have premises spaces, so you want your couch covers and that play areas, and it really does have that.
So I think it would just depend on the number of, that we take into account, you know, some staff. And then, you know, how much of that area, and what part of the area we could use, because there's some related issues as well. So the basin isn't, uh, like the, by the hillside, back hillside by where the PlayStation is, is where the basin is. Um, and there is some related issues, so I'm not sure where they could actually go. So I would have to look at it. I could, probably the architect would be come to give us a recommendation on if we're only going to use some of the spaces, what would that look like, where would that go?
There's a little bit more street market in that, um, in general, like, you know, so I'm wondering if you could just, I don't know, but two, how much of the, you know, the program now, something, do we have to have any spots?
Oh, I suppose. I mean, I could have something there, could do a parking space?
Or just a.
I mean, it's not, I mean, it'd give a dent, right?
Right. And you can, like, around the river, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of street market.
Right, right. And that, so I'll ask, I'll.
But if you talk about possibly the importance of having a little parking space, I mean, I think it makes sense.
Have they ever talked with them?
Uh, no, I don't think initially, like, at our level. Um, but yes, I mean, I feel like.
Well, just because they're not, that's not our, like, they're not our business, not our property, so.
Right, yeah. I, I was thinking more so just, you know, looking at Voral and.
Can form a last interview there.
Yeah, I think we're studying the, I, I don't want the staff to be like, there's no parking.
Yeah, I mean, I think the answer would be obvious, right? So, yeah, okay, we all are agreeing on the answer.
Obviously, it's, for those people on Zoom, there are some staff in, in the audience here in Voral community, so I'm, I'm hoping to have the honorable feedback. We talked about parking. It's, uh, very sticky subjects for staff and for work.
Yeah.
Oh, I have other questions.
Uh, I just want, one more question. So that this DMR blockers that are still coming to happen.
Yes, yes, that's gonna happen.
That's like a capacity study.
Yeah, that's kind of like a capacity study, because we heard, so it's not really capacity, because the DOE is saying we're good on capacity, but the DOE is.
Well, future capacity, what?
Well, the future capacity, right? The DOE is not considering special program.
Right.
Correct. So that we want DMR to come in and with our special education, you know, department and things like that, to really look at and say, okay, where, like, where is our need and, and, right? Because that's, and that's implied, because that's legal obligations as well, making sure that we get that first, we'll be considering it. So it's not a capacity study, as we're referring to the efficiency study.
So I guess I was expecting them to say, like, okay, we can accommodate, that's another group, and then we can see what's happening.
Well, they don't, I don't know if they necessarily do that, but like, because they're saying, the DOE says we're fine.
It can be really basic, these, kind of, they, the only basis without square footage, number of students. And even the square footage of a building and the number of students, they'll tell you whether you're at capacity or under, or. They're not taking, they have class size number too. They may have yard class size, and then they don't take, but they're not considering school, school groups.
So you can't, without considering how much you have to do, are they saying you are at capacity?
No. They're saying you are not at capacity, you are under capacity.
Did they give you a percentage of what you're under?
No. That would be nice. That would be kind of.
You know, it's sort of like, you're in capacity.
That would, right.
So do you think they're going to come like that, this next step?
The DMR probably won't.
What was, what was that?
Be in my mic, on my mic. This is the people.
What was the character of the blockers? What, there is room, the rooms are just not being used sufficiently. So that's, that's why we're counting DMR coming in to look at. This is the classroom, how, how we're using the spaces, perhaps this small group instruction should be moved to a larger location. So we're just starting from square one, going, walking through the building, seeing what their needs are, and looking at what we currently have, and using that to best the goal. I, I believe during COVID, a lot of people were just spreading, uh, and, and that's what, that's what we're dealing with. But walking through, I think everyone would agree, there is space, um, it's just not being utilized appropriately. And it probably needs to be renovated to be used appropriately. Okay, we're going to move on, and we're sticking to the same topic, uh, topic probably, because we're making a public comment. Having proper education welcomes public participation, has deserved its time, be of progress. More policy, I want six, four, and I want six seven, established, and they're going to be right in the public, it's supposed to pay public fees. Uh, so this is our first public comment. It's three minutes, uh, per speaker, of course, on any topic. Um, and then we'll put our committee reports, I'd review, and come back and public comment. So, um, we'll be open to room, we'll be getting first choice, so we got something else that I'm gonna probably open, and, uh, address.
Hi, um, I'm Sarah from La La Park Road Street. I have a bunch of different disjointed things that I just wanted to comment on. First of all, I wanted to say that today, my older daughter started with a pre-K, and I just wanted to express, not just on behalf of me, but a lot of the grandparents, I just hope to, how appreciative we are that this program was moving forward. I know it was very challenging, um, and there are a lot of different moving parts. So, I, I just wanted to say, it's a huge adjustment. I think the staff did an amazing job, and I could tell that they were all really on their A game. And I think that they deserve a lot of accolades for pulling this off, um, as quickly as they did. And it actually worked out well, to have the pre-K start on that, I want to really get that special attention, so just wanted to say that. Uh, kind of related to that, I, I have some questions about the classroom usage. And I want to start out by saying, I'm sure there's logic to all of it. I just think it would be helpful for people, for the parents who are being affected with their kids, to be able to talk to their kids about what the plan is, um, and to get a little bit more information about where their kids are going to be and when they're moving. I understand that the construction is up in the air in terms of whatever P S T N G, and that's not a reliable schedule. But I just wanted to mention that some of the kids have been moved already once and might be moved again. And I, I just would really ask that, um, maybe from board, maybe from the staff, there's, uh, extra communication that goes to the, especially kindergarten kids who are moving, just so that we can prepare them as parents and families. And, and it also takes away the questions and the concern, like, you know, that, you know, this is all being done for good reasons, and by, and what point, and just, even if it's held up, it's okay to say that. I think all of us want to be understanding and want to know that, you know, oh, okay, it was supposed to be beginning October, when pre-K was in, it's not for X, Y, and Z, and having those reasons would be really helpful to get that family and parent buy-in. So I think you can get that buy-in, but we need a little more transparency in what's going on with our kids, because they're really young. We still haven't really stressed about, you know, where they are, if they're being moved and when. Uh, so that's, that's the first thing. I'm sure over the years, many things have come up, and probably you've heard these things before, but I wanted to ask about the cereal bags. Um, and whether there would be some healthier cereal options. I'm assuming cost is a big part of it. When kids don't, um, at least in her, that's all I know, when kids don't want their hot meals, they have an option of making a bagel bag or a cereal bag, which is great, because kids can be picky, but the cereal is pretty unhealthy and sugary. Again, I feel like this is probably a pretty common thing that's brought up, um, you know, over the years. I'm sure there's a lot of school lunch talk, um, I'm sure not the first one to bring it up. Um, but I just wanted to mention, you know, we, we don't need to have pure sugar, um, as an option, um, when kids get really picky. So I hope that's something that maybe could be, uh, looked at.
Fine.
And I can, I have a couple of things, but I can come back if it's, they're all disjointed anyway.
Thanks, Evan. Somebody else who wants to speak?
Good evening, everybody. President, president of Ohio Market Education Association. Uh, just a few quick things. One, I have this fancy flyer, and I'd like to invite all board members to attend our meeting, the candidates night. So, please, for the board and the committee. So we hope you'll join us on October eleventh, at seven, we're going to have, um, a bunch of refreshments, uh, probably PlayStation. We have a prepared program, um, a couple of prepared questions that we're gonna ask the candidates. Um, and then hopefully, we can, you know, have a mingle a little bit, um, so we hope you'll join us for that. Want to thank Marilyn, I bet you even all about negotiations, it was very timely, because we had our first negotiations committee meeting today.
Lots, lots.
So I did share that with the committee, um, and we will be reaching that out about that, so we'll try to get started on that. Um, also, I had shared, um, the, the board members who are on the social leadership team, um, the, and Marilyn, if you want to share with anybody else. Um, the labor management, the New Jersey Public Schools Labor Management Collaborative, which you're a part of, is having, um, a kind of a pre-conference to the teachers convention, November seventh through ninth, um, at the Golden Nugget. And, um, it's completely paid for by all the organizations, the NJDA, the NJPSA, but it's like, it's like the superintendent association, and the, um, supervisory association. So we hope, if you are available, you can come, because, uh, you know, we want to continue that, and, um, you know, they want us that whole team there. So anyone who can come, that'll be great. And, uh, the HPA would be committed to helping pass any referendum that you would like to put forward. Thank you.
And, and your support always. We will, we will hold you to that. Any of the speakers in the room?
Can I go back for a second?
Uh, let me just check, uh, if there's anybody. Got those hands online? Happy to take that free. Move on, yeah, that's, we have speakers.
Sorry, I'm trying to be as brief as I can. Um, I'm Sarah from La La. I just wanted to mention about the, uh, referendum. I just wanted to clarify, the P three can go forward without a referendum, and then the referendum is specific for, if you chose that option for the building upgrades, but, um, uh, I think those upgrades seem great and absolutely necessary, just wanted to say. The, um, so a, a couple more things, um, I feel like this is maybe the time that I can say this, and maybe other times I can't say this. But, and I know this is controversial, um, my daughter now, you know, is, is going, my daughters are both in Irving, uh, she's in kindergarten. My younger doesn't, she just started, uh, pre-K, um, but now she goes to Pledgeable Edges, which is, you know, something that all school kids know. But it is something that I think is a little more nuanced these days, and, you know, even in this room, when we said it, it always just confuses me why it's given, and, um, it's just something I wanted to, to bring up, you know, not even this for everybody. Everyone stood and is respectful, and I will always hope my daughter can do that, but I think maybe, um, we could have some conversations with kids about, you know, if the pledge, again, maybe, I know this is probably silly, but we're staying underground in a public school building. I just still don't understand that, I never have, so just wanted to say that. And so last thing I want to say, and I'm sure, I, I, I think teachers are probably the best people in our community. I'm sure that parking is an incredibly high priority for you all. But when I heard some of the discussion about an extra classroom for universal pre-K versus a couple of spots, where, you know, that one, a couple of spots isn't gonna do something for the entire teacher population. And I really think we, like I said, it has been incredible to have this pre-K, um, program. It serves the entire community regardless of, of income, race, uh, you know, background, it's for everybody. It's one of the most important things. It should be the key, it is the key statement. It should be for the entire, you know, country, universal pre-K. It's something that is critical for all families. And I just wouldn't want to see that halted. I know that at the last meeting, um, you said that as long as we show our best effort. I really hope it's the best effort to get as many classrooms as possible, and maybe there's other parking creative solutions. The classrooms really should be the priority, and I just hope that that's taken into consideration. And I'm sure there's other creative ways we can look at parking. I just, I think that the kids and the classrooms should be prioritized. Thank you.
Thank you. If you see one hand online, uh, so if you want to, if you want to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, okay. Yeah, your, your, your mic, really, it's, it's not working all that well, but, uh, um, as long as you can hear me, that's, that's fine. The, uh, issue I wanted to address, which you have a resolution proposing to purchase vape detectors in the middle of high school.
Can you speak a little louder, sorry?
Sorry?
Can, can you speak a little bit louder?
Certainly. There is a resolution on your agenda proposing to purchase vape detectors in the middle of high school, C sixteen. You see that?
Yes. Yes, what did you want to say about that?
Sure. So, um, I had some questions about it. One is, uh, what is the plan for where in the schools these, um, surveillance devices would be located? And then the second thing is just sort of a general, uh, overview of how this, uh, they work, how are they powered? How do, how do they, um, detect vapes? How do they differentiate from other things? And how, and how do they, how are, how do they signal an alarm?
Okay, um, we, yeah, we, we thank you for your comment, and we can reach out to you. We don't do a back and forth in terms of responding to questions. But I hear you have questions over vape detectors, um, and, um, they will be going to bathrooms, but beyond that, um. Okay, we'll follow up with our question.
That'd be great for the board to hear too. Yeah, I, it never occurred to me, but I have no idea how they work, what they do. It's a big. Terrifying, this is the. Thank you.
Okay, no other names. We're gonna, no other hands up. We're gonna move on to, uh, committee reports and curriculum instruction.
Uh, so curriculum instruction has not met since our last meeting. We're actually meeting tomorrow, so the items on our agenda are all due for next week. But we'll have our committee report, uh, not next week, two weeks. Field trips, the resolution to approve the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven green team, three-year strategic plan, which is a tax exempt agenda. The resolution to approve the safe opening plan for this school year, that is, um, still required from COVID times. Um, so we, there are changes, but we do have to approve, um, for this year. And then some following new work, changes to courses, so environmental science, a science course. We are tabling zoology and animal behavior for some more revisions, and then skills for success as a career and technology course. And this is, we're getting, there's a lot of curriculum this week. The resolution to approve just job descriptions for the Voral and, and. The resolution to approve job descriptions for the art and early after-school, part-time secretary and assistant site manager. These are also, just like we approved in our last voting meeting, job descriptions that need to be updated. So as we call happen to actually coming across these, he is updating them. And then waiting for approval. And that concludes my report. Questions for curriculum? I put the answers.
Yes, I put the answers to men on September 1st. And our first item, agenda item was the new course that Allison just spoke about, the Skills for Success course. I know this was initially introduced by Dr. Kozia at the last meeting. We got into a bit of discussion on some of the questions I think that the excellence had just around framing of the course. Dr. Kozia presented the background information for us. So the Skills for Success program is a general education course or will be offered as such, and it is a wonderful network we offer. So it will be available to all students. ICR, self-contained support, self-resourced support will be provided as needed as part of our all education courses. Class is modeled on a similar program that's currently being offered in touch for students who are in their emotional behavioral support program. And also in terms of internal, an internal course offering that's currently happening, that the Skills for Success is meant to kind of build on upon and it is being offered to the main students. So these students are currently being provided with support to help them with time management, problem solving, emotional behavior regulation, and, you know, other kind of executive functioning skills related to academic success and then career success as well. So the idea is that this particular course would support students who could benefit from additional support, specific skills building in those areas. And it topics include positive behaviors, classroom study habits, learning strategies, test preparation, research skills, digital literacy, advocacy, and problem solving. And the course is intended to help students who are not self-contained, but are looking to benefit from a class that can give them this very intensive instruction in this area, or specific instruction in these areas that they may not gain in a bar or may not benefit from through exceeding this attention in a larger setting. We discussed with committee some concerns that were raised around the diversity framing of the course and the language around, specifically around addressing deficits in the areas as opposed to focusing on what students do have to offer in terms of their skills and current concept and knowledge base in these areas and how this course can be able to bring awareness or creative and building off of their strengths as opposed to focusing on deficits. So we discussed that. And Dr. Kozia, I think, took those concerns to heart and said that she would be discussing this with the leadership team. And I believe we'll get some more feedback on that soon before we do go on this course. We also talked about some of the language around teacher pleasing behaviors being the objective of the course, no one of the objectives of the course, which, again, just raised some concerns as to whether or not that was something that, you know, not aligned or valued as a transfer of these students. So we look forward to just hearing more from the leadership team on how they are considering revising the descriptions of this class and the goals that are out of content that we're going to achieve. And certainly, again, the framing of the course. We also talked about a concern that was raised around the lack of inclusive language influences from basically broad families in our schools. And I'm not sure specifically if it goes to some schools that were mentioned, but I think more generally, there's some concerns about outdated or exclusive language being used when addressing relationships, caregivers, and communication from the various schools and perhaps in district levels as well. So Dr. Kozia will look into that, just going through communications with the leadership team and identifying if this is where this has been an issue. And really coming together to determine or to discuss the importance of having the language when it comes to the inclusive and communications. Especially, you know, just looking at about the nature of families and then using terms like disparate, mother, father, will be to not be flipped. So it would be wide array of classes, daily arrangements that we have. So we look forward to hearing more about that from the leadership team. Let's say discuss that issue. Let me just move along here. Okay, so we also talked about, this is kind of a follow-up conversation on professional development that occurred with the summer around the sort of responsive classrooms. There was a responsive classroom change in training provided to teachers over the summer, including this whole place, full advisory professional workshop. And that core content was designed to be turned into staff in the fall. So that has occurred. Our staff has been able to turn people they learn around responsive practices into teachers' lessons. So they're trying to integrate that this content and restored work into their classroom lessons. Dr. Kozia is also collecting some reflections, some requests from the committee, just some reflections from staff who attended these media opportunities to determine what they gathered and how they benefited from these particular resources. And we also talked about, just in the sense of some of the participation numbers. So I think we'll discuss that at the next meeting. We also talked about new staff, although there's a lot of hiring that occurs. We're happy about that. But of course, we were also thinking about the excellence topic or ongoing sort of topic in the area of concern, and that is recruitment and retention of more Asian members, teachers, and personnel who are brought in from our schools. Let's see. The new hires approved teachers, particularly in elementary and special education. A lot of new hires are in those particular ability grades and in special education. New hires also moved to Aids and parent professionals, business administrator, of course, the CST members, assistant principal, child care director. So they were just hiring kind of across the board. We looked at the racial breakdown of new staff, which Dr. Kozia provided. So the total number of new staff in all of these positions were 39. Racial demographics were not too surprising, 77% white, 10% black, 8% Latino, Latinx, Hispanic, and 5% Asian. Dr. Nikozia reported that many of these new hires were the result of outreach presentation that relations who did at career events at various colleges and universities. The brothers GSC, Montclair, TCUJ, and Patterson. They've also participated in kickoff meetings with Leslie Hall, I believe, and other GSC professors, or GSC professors and the teachers at the program, which really, it sounds like helped you generate some of the really great candidates and were able to lean on more years in the district. So of course, the racial demographics, we hope you would see a little bit more of an increase in our diversity, but we're happy to see that we did have a number of new hires across the board in our different demographic categories. And we just talked about how this is sort of ongoing work. And we think the outreach is going to begin, I think, supplement and improve the outreach to recruitment, so that we can see those numbers increasing more. In all those lines, we talked about our membership in the New Jersey Consortium, really excellence through equity. And that particular consortium is membership-based. And we are now in our second year, I believe, as members of this consortium. We discussed the situation to try to get some benefiting from membership of this consortium. Dr. Kozia did honestly reflect on the fact that last year leadership found workshops were about to be not quite the best fit for our, where we are right now in our kind of equity and excellence related work. Dr. Kozia said that we just felt like there are, some of the offerings were not quite at the level that our team is in terms of their work in excellence. So they're hoping that this year they will find some programming and workshops. And we've all heard that are more aligned with where we are in that process and not sort of at an entry level, is a term Dr. Kozia used, entry-level sort of discussions around this matter. So, you know, again, we just wanted to make sure that as we venture out and using and identifying and trying to use these kind of resources that are available that are actually getting our, you know, money's worth. So we really want to just monitor and, I think, yeah, assess the extent to which we really benefited from this membership. And hopefully that whole sponsorship that is this year. So we talked about really taking a look at what's being offered this year and determining where the leadership can really kind of sway themselves and find, I think, offerings that will benefit this school district. And on that note, and by the way, it is linked to the New Jersey Consortium. Many members here may not be familiar with that particular entity. It is linked in the notes on the New Jersey Consortium or Excellence Through Equity, which is an actual organization that is run through the School Boards Association in partnership with Penn University. So there's this partnership. And I believe at this point, there's a growing number of districts around the state who are involved in this consortium in the various regions across the state. So hopefully we can, again, continue to find some, find some benefits and maintain our membership there. And that's it.
Thank you. Questions for Ronnie?
I want to know what to say because I actually don't know the consortium, but their speaker this year is Curtis Acosta. He's really, the speaker for the consortium is actually Curtis Acosta. And he's really helped into some of the ethnic studies program there and a lot of work in schools. So he's great. I don't know anything about the consortium, but I would hope he would be actually good despite his past experience. But I agree with you on serving us.
Great. I noticed that too, it was actually the website, saw what they have coming. And they're focused as well to share with you the themes on culture-sustaining practices and passive-based practice, so hopefully we'll see. But yeah, I agree, the names look good. See what you think. Dr. Kozia, thank you so much, though, for just entertaining this, this trial of the agenda that wasn't initially on our agenda. But sometimes that's the way our conversations flow at Equity Excellence. It's just, I think, one topic leads into another, led into another. So sometimes we cover you with questions and ask your data, then we can't get this at the moment. But we appreciate the work of this.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? I'm finance facilities. So we are leaving tomorrow, so there aren't any minutes to, we did know that was last month, I think. Right? So I'm just going over the items on the agenda. We are going to be looking to approve general cafeteria and athletic buildings. General cafeteria from September and athletic from July through September. We have, we have a resolution to approve treasurer's report as of August 31st, which I will say I appreciate everything being so very, very timely for the way we're approving, as money's going out for approving it to the excellent, thank you. There's a resolution to approve secretary's awardations report as of August 31st, that there are no budgetary line items that have been overextended. Same thing on number five. That there is no major account or problem has been extended, violation of the codes. And sufficient funds are available to leave the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the year. So applying that as of August 31st. There's a resolution to approve the list of transfers through August 31st. There's travel as well, all these things are attached. There are two students who are on home instruction, can be in an ad-hoc replacement. So we need to vote on that as well as two employees who like their children to be in our district. So we have tuition for non-resident employees. We have two students who have this replacement that need to be approved for the remainder of the year. Bedside instruction for one student, that's number 11. Number 12 is contracting outdoor services for students who are under caring. And that's a need for someone's IUP. We have weatherproofing. We're looking at the resolution to approve a contract with weatherproofing technologies. This is funded through Art Esser. And some of that is high school, that's high school, middle school, bottle and earning. There's a resolution to approve a contract for electrical panels in Irving. I love that the Art Esser, we got modular classrooms. Same thing on number 15, it's the cabling and so forth also can module classrooms. And then the vape detectors, that's on the floor. The vape detectors, we did discuss before the summer. Would get if they should have been installed over the summer. It sort of didn't happen, and so we're back to it. Normally, vape is installed, and we purchase them. The bills go in high school. So questions?
Yes, any question? Sure.
The weatherproofing technologies, does that help us address any of the issues that you found during the walk-through?
It's actually for some root repairs to address some of the leaks. Although last week with all that brand, we have additional repairs there. So, but we did receive two broad brands that we applied for that will address some root issues at Irving, a partial at Irving, and a partial at high school there.
Any else? And moving on, personnel, Anne?
Okay. Can you guys hear me? I'm having a hard time hearing you guys.
Oh, yes.
Okay, great. I can tell if it's me or you. Personnel, our, our meeting, we had a last minute cancellation from emergencies. We did not meet. We have not met since the last board meeting. Everything on the agenda is pretty self-explanatory. There's nothing that I think is terribly controversial. Number two, we are putting, Dr. Nikozia is recommending that we approve some leaves of absence. Number three, we're saying goodbye in Squazo, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Thank you for your service. Number four is elder resignations. Thank you, everyone. Number five is a transfer of a paraprofessional. Number six, extra compensation for a secretary. Number seven, extra paraprofessional duties for an employee. Oh, this is great that we're having a one-to-one for after-school activities. That's, that's great that we're able to provide that. Number eight, extra compensation for several paraprofessionals. Several, sorry, one and several. It's about 10. Number nine, additional sections for a teacher, or actually a cessation of additional sections for a teacher. Number 10, Mr. McDeShale doing a portfolio assessment and instruction. Eleven, babysitting for back-to-school night retroactively. Number 12, translations. Thank you, Ms. Chan, Ms. Tadros. Number 13, we have our professional development academy. And if I'm remembering this correctly, we compensate teachers for the prep, but not after the presentation itself, typically these are our words, or for both?
Yeah. Sorry, yes, both, please, efficient and rough.
I see, I see. I think I, I just heard something that we talked about the last meeting. Somebody's, they all look fantastic. I had a couple of questions. Dr. Nikozia, what does IXL mean for a doctor, for a Ms. Coppola? Is that, is that a particular subject or is that like supervision?
Oh, I think it's a specific program for special ed students.
I'm sorry, can you, could you try that again?
A specific program, an online program for special ed students. Like a program, a specific program that they're using.
An online program for special education students?
Yes.
So they have this special, sorry, I consider that your and Marilyn's mics are like a little touchy to the outside world. Everybody else is doing okay. Yeah, no, I don't know. No, no, personal, personal, personal. It's just an appointment thing. Okay, thank you. Michelle Paxton, I saw she's teaching, using brisk education AI to make teachers' life easy here. I was just curious if anybody knows what that, that means, what that is. Sounds really interesting.
I know, but it's, write it out, you know?
Yeah, I can Google it too. Write it down, thanks. Okay, and 14 is for after, for the after-school program staff being approved. And number 15 is a, we're looking to approve volunteer hours for your faculty student. Thank you, Faison Arcoon. That's great. That person will be at Barlow working. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions for personnel? I don't know which one is on the right. I use the lights because here's the deck. Any questions for personnel? About personnel, very good. Okay, policies, we did not meet. There is finally, something that came through on the, it's on sick leave policy. But we're not ready yet, some, I, I thought we're not ready yet to propose it. It's one of these we got in the house. So, so we move to president's report. So so we move to president's report, which is me. So two things, one is I hope everybody put up to over eighteen on their calendar to our first strategic plan planning meeting. Please spread the word, we really would like a cross section of the community as well as we want the board. And I emailed out the letter of invitation that Christina had written. If you can think of anybody that you could share it with, please do with the community. We have committees working on it, but everybody's super busy and we only want to get, at least try to get word out. We'd love to have a large turnout for that first meeting. And then there'll be a meeting in January or in February, we'd love to rock out people after this one. And I just want to follow up with what Dr. Nikosia said about the walkthrough. It was very eye opening for me, I not walk through all these buildings. And but I really appreciated that John Klein again, who's our facilities director and Lucy DeRosa, we're looking at a new set of eyes, right? Because we're coming into the district and we're all used to, well, not me, but people are used to seeing how it looks. And it's, I think it's healthy to have a new set of eyes on it to say this could look so much better. I mean, John Klein again, wanted to come to my house because because he posted a blog and says, paint's too dark, we lighten the paint, it would look so much better. Or these fixtures, I really think that could use its help. But he has a great eye and then obviously this becomes long because they're all really important things. And I think it can make a big difference. Obviously, the most important thing to my mind, the ADA, the generator, safety, security, ADA would comfort roof leaks, maybe they don't, maybe they're terrible, the others, I don't know, but roof leaks are very significant. The damage is closing as far as significant, I don't think so. So we have a lot on our plate, lots to figure out how to do. I think it's really important that we we attack it all. You know, come up with a priority list, that's John, it's John, it's the small things, but obviously we need to funnel through the areas and figure out how we do that. So it's, there are a lot I guess, but I do appreciate the fact that we have the information. A little depressing, but we have it and we can figure out that and follow with it. So that's all I have. Anyone have anything on whole business? Or new business?
I do have something to relay from the CPAG, if I can do that.
Sure, sure, yeah.
The special education parents advisory group is holding a fundraiser Thursday night at Pino's, starts at five-thirty. There is a video game competition, there will also be food available. And I think I've seen the flyers posted in all the school lobby. So if you, and I think you may have shared it online as well. So definitely five thirty, Pino's, Thursday, bring your kids, they like video games, have fun.
What group did you always buy?
CPAG, special education parents advisory group.
Thank you.
Anything else, anyway?
I hope also new business, all sure that it's Pino's. I'm sorry about that. I shared this information with all, just as a parent of all of the high school, all of the school principals, but Pino's is starting at educator half hour. I'm just not just having fun, you know.
Just one hour?
No, exactly. Half hour, two and a half hours. Every Friday from three to five-thirty, so right after school, we're going to do a little survey and teachers said right after school would be.
Yeah.
There's wine specials and beer specials, some of them pizza specials, so.
Teenagers don't drink.
No, not at all.
Well, they really pizza.
Yes.
I'll just go back to share it all with you.
Okay.
Now let's add a couple of, I'm not so happy, new business, but I just wanted to announce that we've been making its way around to the public, but there will be a celebration of life for our dear former colleague, Darcy Sinorosi. And that'll be over eight at four P M and it's going to be at the High School in Casteria. And we have four o'clock P M and there is an R C P email, I'll just go ahead and read it aloud here. Darcy Memorial R C P at gmail dot com. So that is a little community, but they are asking for R C P. And then I also noted, and I am not literally a particular teacher, but we apparently had a loss of a loved high school teacher, former high school teacher, Donna McLogic, McLogic. Do you know about that name of yours?
Yeah, so it's apparently it's a very much beloved teacher.
Some people never, I've paid no, but some people did, yeah.
Did I pronounce the name right?
Uh, nothing, I think.
Yeah, so I just wanted to acknowledge again the loss of a loved teacher who I know has been, who's touched many students lives just based on some of the tributes on Facebook from the community members who came up to the high school and talked about how how much it impacted actually out of their lives. And then on a more, more than do, I wanted to ask about, and this is probably going to be a discussion that's best for regular committee, but I know there was recently a letter that was sent out to Varel parents regarding the continuation of our advanced learning program. And that would be starting up soon, but there seemed to be some confusion or misunderstanding around the nature of this program in terms of accessibility. I know in the past when some programs initially introduced in the spring of twenty eighteen as somewhat of an alternative to traditional K through five program, we really at board, at the board level, we talked about ensuring that this was a program that would be open to all K through five students. And I believe that is the way it has been implemented in the past, but I did want to get some clarification on that. And I think in public will be important to make that clear because the letter seemed to contradict that in the sense of the language that we've instituted in terms of indicating that students would have to, would be, would have to sort of apply or be selected to participate in the program. But I just want to be clear that this program is being offered to all, the cycles are being offered to all K through five students, if I'm correct.
So just to clarify, there's two programs that happened. There's an enrichment that's for all students K through five. And then there's the A L P, which is for, I believe it's either third through fifth or fourth and fifth, that's open to all students and they can select a path with like humanities, STEM and things like that. So the A L P is this very program. And then the other part of our G and G and T program is enrichment for all. So there are actually two separate, both, two separate programs.
Right, okay, but they're both, so A L P when it was initially written, it's still a school-wide all access program?
Not, not, I think it's only the third through fifth or fourth and fifth. I think fourth and fifth, it's only, it's for fourth and fifth. And then, and then enrichment, enrichment for, our G and T enrichment is for all students.
Okay.
K through twelve, I'm sorry, K through five. So all, all students K through five made enrichment. And then A L P is open to fourth and fifth graders.
Okay.
And that's how it's been.
Right, okay, so maybe I need to look back at the program outline for A L P as it was written, because from what I read, maybe I was reading, that the A L P itself is actually an all school program, not just an enrichment program.
No, enrichment's for all.
Okay.
A L P is for the.
But I think that other point is selection for the program. Because there's something like three assessments that you got to do a third. Can you like put it in the program? So it might sound like what has access to.
No, 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 okay, that's just.
It's not really assessment, it's more like, you know, what are your interests? Are you good at this type of things? Do you like this sort of thing? And then I think they kind of choose, the teacher class to choose which of the sections you best fit into. So if you're really, you know, more interested in STEM and math, there might be something more along those lines. I don't get too much to it, but it's something like that.
Yeah, you're right, it's more like, it's more, it's more of a survey of their interests so that they can have a specialized path for their their level of interest.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just, I think that's.
You look at me. No, I'm just, so we're going out there, it's not like they have to take like a, I don't know those like G and T tests are, it's not like that. It's more like interest surveys, so they take interest surveys by their path for their A L P plan.
But that's for, so that's for the all access enrichment program?
That's for the A L P, which is for all fourth and fifth graders.
Wow, okay, so I'm I'm genuinely.
That are interested in doing that.
That's not the way that I read the letter. Because my letter said there was actually an aptitude test.
No, no aptitude test.
Okay.
But I, you know, that was, we put it on, we'll put it on, ask Michelle to re-explain that's critical instruction that Jennifer wrote you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, I don't, yours is my bag. Any other questions or comments before we move to public comment?
I think it's all.
So the Hennepin Park Board of Education, moving on.
No, I'm out of battery, I think, battery.
All right, I'll try. Sorry, I want you guys to hear us out there, I'm not going to make it happen. The Hennepin Park Board of Education welcomes public participation. I reserve this time for your comments and then the policies, the one six four, the one seven. The staff is to regulate the right of public, participate in public meetings. So if you would like to speak, if there's anybody in the room who wants to speak. Seeing none, we see one hand up. Julia?
Hi, hi everybody, Julie Doohers, one eighty-eight Dartmouth Street. I am thrilled to hear all these ideas for new building. Extremely thrilled, having gone to every single school in the district and worked in two of them. Of course, I'm very excited about the Rattan ad property, not to sound like. Has there been any thought, I heard Dr. Nikosia say the first two floors could be for teaching. Just out of curiosity, if a third floor was built, could it be maybe like centralized office, like superintendent, business, maybe educational services, maybe all in one place? Just something to think about. Also thrilled to hear about the media center at the high school. I think it is very antiquated and is taking up space that could be utilized much better. And lastly, debate detectors. As a staff member that has been asked to go into the ladies rooms more times in the last two years, I am thrilled and thank you. And that is all.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I move the bleeder. We have second.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
See you two weeks.